We're back in public session now. And I would like a motion to approve the consent agenda, please.
I motion that we consider the consent agenda.
Consider, yes. Do you have a second?
I second.
Thank you. Any thoughts or comments or questions?
Pretty straightforward.
Okay, Mr. Gaynor.
Mr. Trimble.
Yes.
Ms. Crenshaw?
Yes.
Mr. Heintz?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes. And now we'll turn it over to Ms. Kirby for the work sessions semester one data.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry. Can I just make also one recognition to Ms. Pompey, who is the Avid teacher in her retirement. She has helped my daughter tremendously in her college selection and college application process. And so the Avid program has been really remarkable for Kelsey. And so I'm just really appreciative of that.
Just adding on to, sorry.
We thought we were done.
Well, as you said that, it made me think about graduation last year and how you could almost tell who all the Avid kids were without their regalia, just because their handshake were a little different, their eye contact was a little different. I mean, their soft skills were.
It's such a powerful program.
Sorry.
Now it's yours.
As I start, I do want to also acknowledge Deb Moore, who is retiring, our coordinator of student services. Who's just done wonderful, wonderful work for us. Has been a great partner with our non-public schools in particular. And also Patty Smith at Monticello, who's been such a support for her students there. So wishing everyone well. All right, so it is now that time of year to do a check on where we are in our mid-year academic indicators. So we have the academic services team and members of our chief of schools team here to share where we are across the multiple metrics. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Jenkins. And I think probably what will be best is as we go through different topics, just to kind of jump in with those questions there. So, you know, we have, we talk about what's top of mind versus can we go all the way back?
Yeah, great.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Board of Education members, Superintendent Kirby, Mr. Gaynor. As Superintendent Kirby mentioned, we'll be providing a semester update on our strategic plan. And we'll be providing some information on our leading indicators, progress on those initiatives, along with next steps. And this did work a moment ago. I apologize. Maybe it'll work now. Now it's working, all right. So we have various presenters tonight with us. As Superintendent Kirby from the academic services team, also Chief of Schools office will also be presenting to us. So tonight we have Ms. Rachel Coleman, our chief of schools, myself, Chief Academic Officer. We have Mrs. Amanda Zapotecny, our coordinator of curriculum instruction. Dr. Lashonda Abduzatar, Director of SEL and Academic Supports. Ms. Allison Byrd, Director of Data Assessment and Research. And Mr. Robert Swaggart, our Director of College and Career Readiness. So this graphic outlines the five goals of our strategic plan, each contributing to our district's mission. And for tonight's presentation, we'll focus on goals one and two of this strategic plan, covering attendance, literacy, mathematics, graduation, and our next steps. So slide five represents our strategic plan goals for '26 in the right column, while the left column outlines our goals for this year, highlighting those incremental steps that we're taking to achieve our long-term goals. So as we know, we present tonight, we might be using some unfamiliar terms to our audience. So we did provide a glossary for yours to assist you. Please use that for your reference. And I'm now going to turn it over to Allison Byrd, who will start us off with attendance.
Good evening, everybody. Is the volume okay? Is the mic close enough?
Yeah.
All right, there are two strategic plan goals focused on attendance, attendance rate and chronic absenteeism rate. The attendance rate is calculated using the time students are scheduled to be in school and the time they are actually in school. The state of Ohio requires us to report this information to the hour, but families may also receive this information by class period or by day. And then for chronic absenteeism, this represents the number of students who are absent 10% or more of their scheduled time compared to their total enrollment. Both measures are highlighted on the state of Ohio's annual report card. Our attendance rate is included as an informational data point. And the chronic absenteeism rate is a measured indicator that is part of the gap closing component for schools and the district. In order to meet the indicator, schools must be at or below the annual chronic absenteeism target, which for this school year is 16.4%. There is another way, however, that schools or districts can meet the indicator, and that's by reducing their chronic absenteeism rate by 1% or 3%, depending on what the rate was the previous year. So that's why on the slide, you see the 2025 target for chronic absenteeism to be less than or equal to 34.5%.
And the 16% is for every district that is statewide?
Correct. So in an effort to be proactive, we monitor our attendance weekly in tight times, sometimes daily. What you see on this slide again are year-to-date rates as of week 21, which represents through January 24th of this school year. And then on the following side, slide, you'll see rates compared to similar points over multiple years. This is an informational slide, so we're focusing our conversation on attendance rate and chronic absenteeism. However, families may receive notifications about two other absence types, and that is habitual truancy and excessive absences. So just put this in here so that, to help folks understand that those two measures are from the state. And the chronic absenteeism represents a federal indicator. And again, one critical point about chronic absenteeism is that it does not matter if the absence is excused or unexcused, which there are some, there is some give for the other two attendance types.
And at what point does our nudge system kick in?
The attendance nudge letters, between 5 and 10%. And then again, above 10%. So we do two different types of nudge letters.
Got it.
All right, so this would be an example of the type of information that we collect and work to distribute to the schools and district leaders. We use this information to identify patterns and trends in performance and identify where supports may be focused. In addition to monitoring current school year data, we compare performance to prior years to see the long-term impact of our actions. So this slide and the one following are summary slides comparing chronic absenteeism rates from, all the way back from 2019, 2020, through the current school year at three-week intervals. The current year, '24, '25, is represented by the black bar and the bar to the farthest right. You can see here that for week 21, our check-in indicated that we're slightly higher with our chronic absenteeism rate this year, up 1% compared to the same time last year.
Excuse me. During COVID, the state defined everybody as being present. Is that reflected here? When was, when was that? There was this change in our attendance numbers?
It is actually not represented here. So that is the very light gray, and you'll see that stops at week 18.
Ah, okay, thank you.
No problem.
I think that was just from March through the end of that first year.
Correct. The next slide is our attendance rates over time. So we have seen more fluctuation in the attendance rate this school year compared to other years, ranging from 85% in week 15 to 92% in week three. Week 15, for those who may be wondering, is the week of Thanksgiving and only a two-day week for students and staff. And you can see since that week, we've been on a steady increase. Now I'll hand it over to Dr. Abduzatar, who will speak about action, action steps.
Okay, so we, each school has an attendance team, and each one of these teams meet with us monthly or bi-monthly. It really depends on some of the goals that the teams have set. And we meet to determine next steps and approaches to combat the attendance, to make sure that we either meet our target or stay on target. So it's a team approach, and many of the teams consist of the attendance clerks, administration, social workers or counselors, and then other support or key staffs, such as deans or assistant principals. So we utilize an evidence-based approach to attack attendance. And I say attack because it is a nationwide issue of attendance across a lot of different districts throughout our country. So we use, Attendance Works last year came in and they worked with us on a root cause analysis. And we were able to utilize a lot of their strategies to help support us for this year and the end of last year. So some of our categories I listed here are our data analysis and monitoring. And for this, we again meet with teams bi-monthly. We report our data on a weekly basis in our peak of the week, as well as during these attendance meetings to identify at-risk students and also provide early interventions when necessary and contact families as necessary. And the key personnel is all personnel, even though we meet with that key team. We solicit teacher support, as well as any other agency or partnership support that we can. Also, addressing the root cause is really important for us to understand why students are out so that we can help work through any barriers they have. So our social workers are crucial in contacting families, working with students to eliminate any barriers, and then also providing some targeted supports from, you know, through referrals with counseling or social service agencies. And then we're able to work through some individualized plans for our students. We also have incentives and recognition. So we do work with, we have stay in the game right now, so they provide some incentives and supports. But then also each school has their own incentive program. Sometimes it's linked with their PBIS programs. It's either class initiated or it's the whole school reward that they get. There's also a trophy traveling around from each school provided by Superintendent Kirby.
Do we know where that is living right now?
Yes, it lives, the best attendance lives at Roxborough Elementary School and the most improved for elementary lives at Boulevard. Both the best and the most improved for middle school lives at Roxborough Middle School. And the best, well, no, the most approved lives at Options in the high schools. But I can tell you, the most improved attendance at the high school is the seniors. Very proud of class of 2020.
That's great.
Hat myself a fact.
Thank you so much, Ms. Kirby.
So, and I love that Ms. Kirby chimed in and talked about, we not only give attendance incentives to those who are constantly meeting those marks, but also those who are improving. So we're able to look at those students, like Ms. Byrd said, on a daily basis and kind of see and track them to know where they fall. Other things that we do are outreach to family engagement. And Mr. Trimble already talked about our nudge letters. So nudge letters are sent out to students who are between 5 and 10%, and that's a proactive approach. So before they hit that target of 10% chronic. But then we also send that out to our students who are over 10% just to let them know. And what's interesting, even though we use it to calculate overall amount of absences, we do, you know, a lot of parents may not know or understand how we calculate attendance, so it does spark conversation. We also make sure that we include resources and supports that we can send home to families. We include that in the nudge letters, and then the principals make sure that they put that in their newsletters as well. And any other resources or supports, such as collaborating with outside agencies and working with our CLCs at various schools that have CLCs, we use that approach to make sure that we constantly communicate to families the importance of coming to school or bringing their child to school. And then finally, I want to talk about the multi-tier support. So with multi-tier support, it allows us to intervene early, individualize support, and determine effectiveness of strategies that we're already using on that tiered support basis. So every student doesn't necessarily get the same type of intervention.
Which intervention would you say has been the most effective?
The most effective?
Yeah.
So it depends on when you're talking. So I think at the beginning of the year, I didn't talk about this, but we do a beginning-of-the-year phone call bank. So I think that that has proven to be pretty successful at the beginning of the year. We always start strong with our nudge letters. We're still trying to figure out if that is a great intervention. We know last year that was, so we will have to compare that data. But I think the outreach, calling home, especially at the elementary level, informing people of how we take absences, because even though it's excused, it's still chronic, and a lot of people don't know that. So I would say the outreach is probably the most effective.
Is there a discrepancy between the way the state counts hours and we're counting periods that are less than an hour? Is there, what do we do with that slippage between, you know, the 46-minute period versus a full hour?
No, we report it by the hour, just, and make the adjustment for the part that's less than the full hour.
Okay, thank you.
That's why some of the information you receive will be, might be by the hour exactly. It could be by the period. And like for the elementary who's not, doesn't use a period format, it'll be like by day or half-day.
Taking off board member hat and putting on parent hat. So my daughter has braces, which means we go to the orthodontist all the time. And I attempt, when possible, to make those appointments if they have to be during the school day, because after-school is tough to get appointment. I try to do like her lunchtime. Does there, are we, are we getting dinged for that? Since it's not during instructional time?
It is not during instructional time, so we should not be getting dinged for that. We do have a hard time, I say hard time, but the office staff love that you bring the kiddos back. And they do capture that exact amount of time from the checkout to the check back in. And if it does fall in there, identify lunch period. It's not part of their instructional time.
Awesome, thanks.
To me, it would be interesting, as part of the information that we provide families in the nudge letters and all of that really important stuff, to give them some data on, you know, really correlating academic performance to attendance. Maybe, maybe that's being done, but I kind of think that, that there ought to be a why. You know, and I think that that information is probably readily available. You know, is it a perfect straight, not a straight line? Probably not, but I wouldn't be surprised if it was pretty close.
Yeah, so I worked with Lisa Hunt to coordinate some of the information that goes home in the nudge letters. And so each nudge letter that goes home, and it's about five scheduled throughout the year, each nudge letter has a different type of resource. So one of the resources that we have included in one of those nudge or pushes is exactly what you said, that shows the correlation between academic success and attendance.
And I also think, you know, not only for their student, but for like the school population as a whole. I mean, I think, I think amongst certain parents, there's a thought of, well, it's no big deal if my kid misses a day, because they're, they're getting an A right now in this class or what have you. But removing that kid from the, the school community has an effect on it too. So I'm not trying to overly guilt people, but maybe just minor guilt.
Interestingly enough, we had a conversation at the high school level about the correlation between attendance and after-school success. So if you have poor habits of attendance, then when you get a job, you may not attend, which would result in firing. Or if, when you're off at college, you may not attend, which will result in dropouts. So there's a correlation. So even though your student may be doing well, we have certain measures in place at school that allow you to make up work, where they may not have that in other environments.
Right, that's great.
All right, so I am now going to pass it on to Amanda Zapotecny, who's going to talk about some academics here.
Thank you. All right, so I'm going to provide an update on literacy and math and some of the work that the curriculum and instruction department has been doing so far this year. For our mid-year data, we looked at our winter map and we used the projected proficiency report, which they use an algorithm that projects if students are testing at this point right now, how likely are they projected on the OST to score limited basic proficient, accelerated, or advanced. And so based on those proficiencies, you'll notice that we are not on track to meet our KPIs for the end of this year. However, in most areas, we are showing a slight improvement when compared to our winter projections from last year. So for literacy, for third grade, we did have a very slight improvement of about 1.5%. For sixth grade, we had a little bit larger of an improvement at 7.5% compared to last year. And then for 10th grade ELA, we did see a slight decrease of 3.6%. But all of those are very close to where we were performing last year with slight increases in most areas. With math, we see very similar trends. In third grade, we did see a slight decrease of 4.4%. In sixth grade, we saw a slight increase of 2.6% compared to last year. And then for Algebra I, we did see a slightly larger increase of 7.6% as compared to last year. And this couple, last, last couple of weeks, we've been working with Vicky Lewis on our One Needs Assessment and our ONE Plan. And one of the things she's repeatedly reminded us of is that when you take on a new large-scale initiative or when you adopt a new curriculum, it takes about three to five years of implementation and supporting that implementation in order to yield the results that you want. And so while we're not seeing the results we would hope to have in terms of meeting our KPIs, in most areas, we are seeing slight increases. And so it's reminding us that we need to stay the course and continue to support that implementation. We are in year two of adoption for ELA materials with Munder's and My Perspectives and 95% Phonics. And then this year is our first year of a new adoption with math materials. So as we get into our action steps, I'll talk a little bit about the work that we're doing to support the implementation of those materials. And before that, Ms. Kirby has some data that she put together on our benchmark assessment to compare last year's benchmark results to this year's benchmark results.
So when we get to the middle of the year, we look, we actually have several different assessments that we look at to see where our students are. So you guys have the projected proficiency. We have that for all the grades, though. I'll share that spreadsheet with you, so you can see all of, see all those trends. But the team kept it at 3, 6, and 9, because we've been doing that 3, 6, and 9 focus for these meetings for the past several years. The benchmark is an assessment that is on the CRS, which is actually like a full-scale OST. So our students took this test, you know, January through February-ish. I don't know, I can't remember the exact dates. Then we had the weird weather, so it got a little crazy. But we were able to compare our benchmark this year versus our benchmark last year. This I wanted to see, just because it gives us another data point outside of the map. It also helps us to kind of know, like, where do we need to really uncover and ask some questions? So for example, third grade, both in reading and math, we're seeing in both of those assessments, a concern in terms of student achievement. Now, we know given the math, the math curriculum is new, and then we've had some, you know, there's different situations happening at different schools that have different, you know, outcomes. So we kind of, we know what's behind some of those numbers and most of those numbers. But you'll see, you know, generally, students are doing better or slightly better than they did last year. Last year, they actually took the benchmark twice. We only gave it to them one time this year, because we wanted to redo some of the testing. When we have the, you'll see actually, for the first time, we gave the benchmark to the high school students. I will note that for American history, not all of the students tested. So the students in the AP class did not test for this particular one. And they also use a different schedule when they test it as well, which may have affected their numbers. But it does give both the teachers and the students a sense of what the, what the OST is, what those questions are. And again, you know, we're halfway through the year, but we have another whole quarter of the year to go through until the kids actually test. So that's just a little bit more context to have a look at academic pieces. I'll turn it back over. Wait, are there any, well, actually, yeah, you might have questions before.
Yeah, I, I have a question. When it comes to the winter benchmarks, is there any incentive for the kids?
In some of the, in some of the classes, so for example, in government, it was a part of their, like midterm. So that, that did provide extra incentive. You kind of see that showing up. It kind of depends, I would say, with how different schools and different teachers did it differently. Kind of same with MAPS, too.
Yeah, I mean, I think that, that kids are tested so much. And, you know, I'm looking at some of these numbers and so if they don't, and I'm just wondering if they have any skin in the game at all. And if not, then I think we need to ask ourselves, if they have no, no skin in the game, is there value to the numbers? I think that's a real question we need to answer.
Yeah.
And, and then also, if they have no skin in the game, can we find a way to give them some skin in the game? Is it, is, you know, is a performance at, at level X, does that buy you out of the midterm? You know, or, or some, something along those lines? Because I'm seeing numbers that I think are just simply not reflective of what the kids are capable of.
Well, remember, this is a full-year test, and they're only halfway through.
Absolutely, yes, yes, yes.
So that's, I mean, that's a really important caveat. Really, the, what the benchmark does from an instructional lens is that it gives the teachers and the TBTs and the principals an opportunity to see what skills have been mastered, what skills have not been mastered, at the level of rigor that, as it is, as it is expressed in the OST, so that they can go back and integrate those skills, unmastered skills into instruction. So that's, that is the most important use of it.
Yeah, I mean, I think that we could also, you could create a mid-year benchmark that's just through a certain section of the curriculum also. So I think, you know.
Yeah, is there, is there another way to achieve the same end with?
I just think we'd be, I, I think we could get better data.
So I'll chime in here. We have found, not limited to the benchmark, but just about all of the assessments that we give, that what has the greatest impact is the adults who are working with that student, like their thoughts and opinions on the assessment, and they're informing them of how it's going to be used. So that's, after this iteration, like with anything, we go back to the adults and say, what worked, what didn't work? And actually, so an example of that is tomorrow. During the administrator meeting, we'll be having a conversation with the principals about, like, let's reflect on what we've had so far and to get some feedback from them about what they think impacted performance so that we don't run into the same challenge or the same wonderings next year.
Which is a process you do every year, so that's a good thing, yeah. So we'll continue that cycle. So not to put words in your mouth, Ms. Byrd, are you suggesting that perhaps maybe the students feel that the adults don't think these matter? Or that the testing, no, okay.
I, I mean, I stated it, what we have found, again, whether it's a classroom check, like a formative, what, what the adult who is in front of them or who, who is prepping them for the assessment, whatever the level, we do see a direct connection between what that messaging is and the effort or, like, taking the wondering out of how much effort did students put into it or what was the testing environment?
Because I think it's a big, I mean, 71 is, you know, it's a large gap between our high and our low. That's higher than the, than the performance or close to the performance on the OST last year in government. To have that mid-year is, I mean, clearly, the kids took, you know, took that seriously, yeah.
Yeah. I'd love to know what was behind that number.
So one of our overarching action steps for curriculum instruction is to provide professional development for teachers to facilitate, support, and reinforce the implementation of our core curricular materials. And so the outputs we hope to achieve from that is that all teachers are utilizing our board-adopted HQIM materials, that students are engaging with the materials to support their learning, and that there is an alignment between the rigor of our instruction, our assessment, and the OST. So our core curricular materials have many different parts and components. We want to make sure that teachers are feeling comfortable and not shying away from the parts that are more rigorous and challenging students and supporting them to meet that challenge. And so in order to achieve that, we've been providing ongoing professional learning throughout the year to work with teachers on all the different parts and components of these curricular materials. I did include a link where you can see all of the professional learning that we've provided so far this year. So it lists the date, the intended audience for it, it has a link to the presentation, how many people attended, and how many people were expected to attend. And all of our teams have been through at least one cycle of implementing our data analysis and summary worksheet, and the core planning for instruction with HQIM tools. And those two tools really are at the heart of what we've been doing with teachers all year. Most of our grade-level team meetings, meetings that we've had at the high school this week, which I'll talk a little bit more about in a minute, have used those tools. And the data analysis and summary worksheet is the protocol that was developed by Data and Assessment. It's something that's used district-wide. So when teachers are giving things like the benchmark assessment, it's giving a structured protocol for them to look at specific standards where students excelled, standards where students struggled. And then the core planning tool leads them through all of the steps, looking at their HQIM, how do I address these standards where students struggled? And so our team has been working with teachers to kind of guide them through that process and facilitate where they'll find those resources in our HQIM. Some of our next steps, we are continuing to do walkthroughs in different schools that we have evidence and data on the use of our HQIM and instructional strategies, so we can see how things are being used across the district, and what areas we might need to provide some more support. We are continuing to provide professional learning with a focus on clarity and our high-quality instructional materials. Going forward with our grade-level team meetings, one of the things we want to incorporate is model lesson planning and instruction through Think Alouts, where our instructional specialists are modeling a component of the curriculum for teachers, and then teachers have collaborative time to plan together and to rehearse. And all of that being based on their data-driven instruction, so looking at student data in real time to plan together and to rehearse. And we'll continue to use those two core tools throughout all of our professional learning. As teachers are becoming more familiar with them, I think the effectiveness and the ease of which we're able to use them will increase with that repetition. Our next main action step is to provide teachers with district pacing guides for instruction and assessment. So we want everyone to be relatively on pace with instruction, which can be a little bit challenging with relatively new curricular materials. But overall, we have taken a lot of steps to support teachers with that. So we do have updated district pacing guides that are available on our website. We also send out a weekly snapshot every Friday that has what we're working on the upcoming week, so it tells teachers about where they should be in their pacing, the instructional routines for that week, the focus standards, and the assessments for that week. And that has sparked a lot of great conversation among teachers as well. So if a teacher notices they look at the pacing guide and they're a little bit off, they're often reaching out to our department to bring us into their TBTs and to work with them to support how they can accelerate their pace without sacrificing any critical content. We did make some adjustments to our fourth and fifth grade schedule to allow for some additional science time before the OST. So we made some adjustments in January and March to include a little bit more time for science and integrating science into their ELA blocks. So still practicing ELA strategies, but with more science texts. And then with fifth and eighth grade science, which have been a focus area for us this year, our department did create learning intentions and success criteria that are shared in the weekly update. Learning intentions and success criteria is very closely related to our clarity work. And we do want to have learning intentions and success criteria for all areas, all grades, and all contents. We want teachers to be part of that process of having the ownership of developing that and the understanding that goes along with it. We started with fifth and eighth grade science, because those are the areas we're most focused on right now. So some of our next steps in this area, this was created before this went out, but it has already been shared. On Friday, our team worked with Data and Assessment with Ms. McDonald to identify areas on the benchmark that we could use a little bit more focus before the OST. Standards that had already been taught and covered, but we didn't score maybe how we thought we would score, and we can revisit those before students are tested in April. And so our team took those standards, pulled together some resources from our HQIM, and shared that out on Friday with teachers. And principals and some teachers have shared very positive feedback about that as well. We'll continue to make math pacing revisions based on year-one implementations. We know second grade and geometry specifically are some areas where we need to revisit our pacing guide. It's just more packed with content compared to the amount of instructional days. And so we've been using feedback from teachers throughout the year just to revise that pacing as needed. And then one of the things that we would like to see come to fruition is the District Scheduling Committee that has members from multiple departments in order to develop guidelines for building schedules that consider time for interventions. We know our elementaries have built-in wind time, but with RIMPs coming up to middle school in next year, it's going to be critical that we think through the middle school schedule and how those students are receiving intervention in their school day as well, as well as considering co-teaching schedules, gifted, and EL support, how that fits into the student's daily schedule. Our two main initiatives this year have really been on clarity for learning and student-centered coaching, so I wanted to provide just a quick update on those two things. The Clarity cohort had about 70 teachers participate this year. Sessions one and two really focused on building teachers' knowledge of developing learning intentions, success criteria, getting very clear on what they're expecting from students, and how they're sharing that information with students. So how are students aware of what they're learning, why they're learning it, and how they know that they've been successful in learning it? Our third session allowed for teachers to share the work that they've been doing through clarity and to receive feedback from their peers. It was a really positive and powerful session, and so I wanted to share with you just a couple of examples that came out of that. The example on the far left is a learning progression from Noble. And each of those, like, little posters is a learning target that leads students through the reading progression. So it starts off, I think, with, I can read, like, short-vowel CVC words, and then I can read blends, I can read digraphs, and it gets increasingly complex. And the little rectangles next to it are students' names, so students move themselves when they accomplish a new skill. And the teacher was really impressed with the community that that's created in the classroom, and how students have really been celebrating each other's successes. The activity in the top middle is a learning progression from high school chemistry. So she outlined what skills students should be able to demonstrate if they have a Level One, a Level Two, or a Level Three understanding of atomic structure, and that's shared with students. So students might say, okay, I'm at a Level One right now, I can identify these things. And in order to move to a Level Two or a Level Three, I need to, you know, do a little bit more, I need to be able to explain it, to describe it, to justify it, to calculate, so students can kind of see their learning progression. The bottom middle is a picture of a learning pit, and I know you've probably heard Dr. Jenkins talk a lot about that. But we had a lot of teachers give really good examples of how they're using the learning pit in their classroom, having students identify how they feel through the process of learning, what strategies they use to get themselves out of the pit when they're stuck. A lot of teachers shared menus of strategies that they're sharing with their students to kind of guide them through that selection and getting out of the pit. And then the top-right picture is kind of a hexagonal concept map that a second-grade teacher used with her class. She felt like the students were having a really hard time talking about some science topics and using the vocabulary. And this was an activity we did in one of our clarity sessions, where we had to map out vocab words, and you connect them, and you have to be able to explain how those words are connected. And she was very impressed with the conversations her second graders were having using those vocabulary words. And then in the very bottom right, I just captured a couple of quotes from teachers that came out of those sessions. So this one was a teacher who feels really motivated. She's excited to continue this process with students. Students are so much more engaged and excited about their learning. We had another participant say, when I'm implementing these strategies in my classroom, I notice my kids sit up a little bit straighter and engaged, they buy in and take more risks. And this work has helped me better understand the content I teach and allowed me to expect more from my students, knowing their failures will help lead them to success. And so those were just some kind of common themes we were hearing from teachers about the engagement from students, their willingness to take risks in the classroom, and just being able to hold them to a higher standard than maybe we thought we could before. Student-centered coaching has been another big initiative for us this year, and has a lot of our professional development has focused on that as well. Diane Sweeney has come in a couple of times, I think three times this year, to work with our coaches and with our administrators. And this last time that she came in, we started to implement coaching labs. So coaching labs are where we had two coaches be very vulnerable and open, and allow the other coaches in our district and some of our administrative team come in and observe them in a coaching cycle with a teacher. And so it started with a pre-brief, where the coach gave us some background on the work that they're doing with the teacher, some background on how they organize their own work. And then we actually observed them having a co-planning session with the teacher. And then we had a debrief, where we were able to kind of point out some of the things that we observed, we were able to ask some questions. And the purpose of this really was not to give feedback to the person that was observed, but it was more to approach it from a reflective practice, on how is what I'm seeing applicable to the work that I do? What, you know, questions does it raise for myself as I think about my work? And from that process, we identified some of our strengths and our next steps. Some things we're doing really well is tying our coaching work to the grade-level standard and making connections to clarity for learning. We saw over and over again our coaches referring back to the grade-level standard and engaging teachers in conversations about that, how are they sharing that, and those expectations with students. And our coaches were doing a really great job of leading with questioning and working with the teacher as a partner, rather than approaching it from the position as an expert. We want them to elicit the information and the knowledge from the teacher. And so some of our next steps are to do a little bit more work around the moves. So Diane Sweeney has a book called The Moves, which really gets into the heart of, like, when you're working in the classroom with a teacher, or you're in the co-planning, when you kind of get stuck in the conversations, what are the moves that you use to help coach and navigate? And so we recognize we need to do a little bit more work around that. We've purchased those books, and that's intended to be the focus for next year with our coaches. We also want to have a 60/40 time allocation. And so the idea is that 60% of our coaches' time should be engaged in full coaching cycles, whether that's co-planning with the teacher, coaching in the classroom, or debriefing with the teacher. 40% of their time should be allocated to smaller interactions, whether it's helping a teacher with a specific lesson, a teacher comes to them with concerns of classroom management, a teacher wants help with certain resources. Those are kind of the smaller impact bubbles. We're not quite at the 60% of time in full coaching cycles, but we are getting there, and that's something that we're continuing to work on. And then our next step is continuing to measure impact. So we've, have a process that's allowing us to measure, like, how many people are participating right now? And we have results-based coaching tool logs that coaches submit after each coaching cycle, which gives us, like, anecdotal qualitative analysis. We've done some protocols to start to analyze those, but we are working with Data and Assessment to possibly purchase in vivo software, which would allow us to more easily analyze that qualitative data. And then on here, we do have a couple of graphs that just break down the number of teachers with coaching documentation. So these are teachers that are working with a coach, whether it's a full coaching cycle or one of those smaller touches. We have 135 teachers that have engaged with a coach so far this year, and the chart breaks down which schools those are occurring in. And then in the full coaching cycle, we've had 32 teachers participate in a full coaching cycle so far.
Is it voluntary to have a coach? Or is it like a teacher's voluntold that they will have a coach?
It is voluntary. And so the idea behind student-centered coaching is that the coach is partnering with the teacher fully as a partner, that the teacher is a willing participant, and they're focusing on student growth. So what does the data say that students are learning or struggling with? And how can the coach partner with the teacher to help increase, you know, student performance?
Do we, I guess it's a question back to the benchmarks. Do we disaggregate those benchmark scores by teacher to perhaps offer, I don't know, an opportunity of growth for, or any type of intervention for a teacher?
So teachers have access, yes is the short answer.
Yes.
Yes. We, we, the information is shared in the centralized reporting system in aggregate format, so you can see proficiency rates by school, by the district, by rosters, is how it's defined in the reporting system. And those rosters, we pulled from Infinite Campus to mimic what are the courses and sections that the teachers teach.
And if, if there is, like, I think, to maybe address your question, if there is like a concern with a teacher that might be struggling, that's something that, like, some administrators have reached out to our department to support directly, rather than having the coach. We want the coach to be, like, everyone works with a coach. Everyone has a coach, everyone works with a coach. Working with a coach doesn't mean I'm not doing a great job. I can be a really phenomenal teacher and still work with a coach. And so we are providing support to teachers that might be struggling a little bit, but in a little bit of a more strategic way. I promise I will not keep talking, but I just have two more slides. Just to give you an idea of some of our upcoming work, this, last week and this week, we've met with high school-tested subject areas to look at their, they had looked at their benchmark data on day-to-day on January 27. We are using these meetings as kind of a follow-up to that. So based on the standards you identified where students need a little bit more focus, how can we use our HQIM planning tool to plan for that with the time we have left before the test? And so, for example, today, we met with government, they had four standards they wanted to focus on. We worked with them to show them the assessment authoring system in the CRS, where they can create their own, like, little mini-assessments and use them as teaching tools, rather than an actual assessment. So we created four, like, three-question assessments that they're going to use in their classroom to target those specific skills. We've been using that process with our middle school teams as well. Next week and the week after, we have grade-level meetings that are focused on math, from kindergarten up through Algebra II. We do have Into Math, we have a training coach coming in. Part of the session will be her modeling a routine from the curriculum. And then the rest of the session will have a strong focus on utilizing formative assessment data to guide instruction. So in order to have teachers fully engage in those sessions and make it meaningful, something they can take right back into their classroom and implement, we've asked them to bring two sets of formative assessment data with them to the session. One is the Are You Ready assessment, which is like a pre-assessment for the upcoming unit. And then the other is a week's worth of check-understanding, which is like a one-question check for the, the current week before that assessment. So they'll actually be using that data in the session to plan for small groups and instruction. So that can be something they take right back into the classroom. In a couple of weeks here, in March, you'll actually be hearing from Danielle and I again about pre-K curriculum. So we're currently piloting the Creative Curriculum, and we will be bringing it to the board for approval in March. So just like ELA has an approved list for approved curriculums, pre-K now has an approved list, both for ODEW and also for Step Up to Quality. Creative Curriculum is approved on both of those lists. We did with the pre-K team look at a couple of other curricular options as well. This was the one that the team felt most confident about. So I did link in some resources here for you to look at if you would like to. It's our timeline for the pilot, it's scheduled to end at the end of February. We do have a note-taking tool and a staff survey to get their feedback on different parts of the curriculum, and a parent survey as well. And Danielle has had a couple of families step in and look at the materials so far. She also has a parent meeting scheduled in March to share that with her pre-K families that come to those meetings. We found out in December that our Spanish curriculum is being non-continued, discontinued. And so we are looking into piloting and purchasing a new Spanish program. So we've looked at five programs so far. We brought vendors in to present to our Spanish teachers. We had a note sheet for them to take some notes and things like that. We are looking to narrow it down to two programs that we would pilot next year. The pilot would take place quarter two. And then by February of next year, we would be able to hopefully recommend a program for adoption for the following year. And before we know it, even though it's very cold outside, summer programming will be here, and so our team has already started. We know that this year, there's going to be a focus on high school, rising third grade, fourth grade, sixth grade, and rising ninth graders. And so we are taking steps to organize our staff And so we are taking steps to organize our staff orientation. We have a virtual question and answer session coming up on March fourth after school for interested staff. We have been working with Teach for America, they partnered with us last year, they're interested in partnering again this year to support our summer programming. And then one of the things we've talked about a little bit with data and assessment is looking at how are we measuring impact? So last year we had a pre and post assessment, but looking at that a little more carefully. If a student grew one point, is that really an impactful amount of growth? So just looking more closely at how are we measuring the impact of our summer programming? Any questions? Thank you. And with that, I will invite up Ms. Coleman for school improvement.
So good evening, everyone. Thank you. Amanda did a very thorough job of explaining what occurs in schools. I'm going to give you just a very brief picture of how my department overlaps with the academic services department and just talk to you about school improvement and what this looks like for principals once they get this information from their benchmark assessments, OST data and other data sources. So school improvement, oh, I have to, thank you, thank you. School improvement is based on our OPES two-point-O model. Dan is shaking his head, you're familiar with OTES, which is Ohio Teacher Evaluation System. OPES is the Ohio Principal Evaluation System. This year it was very important for us to focus on school improvement. So there are several standards inside of the OPES two-point-O. We are focused on standard three, which is school improvement. All principals are being evaluated in standard three this year for all of their evaluations. So we're doing a very deep dive into the process of of school improvement. And this is a very quick definition of it and it's a process where a principal leads efforts to enhance the overall effectiveness of the school in order to improve student learning and achievement. It does involve the development, implementation and monitoring of strategies that address identified areas for improvement with the ultimate goal of raising academic performance and closing achievement gaps. So that's a pretty good picture of why our departments overlap. And so I just wanted to provide you with a very quick glimpse of what this looks like in the buildings. There are four components that make up school improvement. It's data-driven decisions, strategic planning, collaboration and stakeholder engagement, and sustaining progress. And so in Cleveland Heights University Heights, this is what it looks like for our principals. All of our decisions are data-driven and they come a lot from some of the assessments that you just were given privy to see the results to. So if you think of the benchmarks, interims, our OSTs and any information around climate and attendance data. Once we have this information, principals do provide a building level action plan that says how they're, that talks about how they're gonna be involved in a school improvement process through their BLAP, which is the Building Level Action Plan. And this year they also did a problem of practice. So inside of the Building Level Action Plan, we asked them to point out a problem that they specifically would really focus on as building principals. So all of the schools have that information. There are a lot of people involved in this process. So you have your DLT, your district leadership team, your building leadership team, the teacher-based teams and instructional leadership team, and then our principal student cadres, which Phil you asked about last year. So each school has a student cadre with the principal so that we can get the student voices as well regarding what they feel is happening in their schools. And this is all around collaboration and stakeholder engagement. And then lastly is sustaining progress. So once we have all of this information, how are we going to evaluate it? So this year, principals and last year, they are involved in principal meetings. Tomorrow is a principal meeting from eight to four-thirty. I invite any of you to join us at a principal meeting if you ever get a chance. They're great professional learning opportunities for our principals. We also started doing partner walks this year, so principals are engaged in walking with the partner from a similar school. I am really proud and want to shout out the work of Rebecca Sharp and Curtis Walker. I was a principal at Roxmead and I will tell you in all transparency, Dr. Jay and I were not as collaborative as these two principals. They call each other all the time, they ask, how are you doing this? Can we talk about what's happening? And they are each other's partners. So it's not uncommon to see Mr. Walker, if he walks Roxborough and Ms. Sharp could walk Monticello. And that also happens with the other principals. And then we do coaching walks. So I am walking with the principals into their classrooms. We walk and then we talk about what did we see? How does it align to the achievement goals of the district? What is it that we need to work on to make sure that we are supporting our teachers so that they could be effective? Our coaching walks are not gotchas, it's really an opportunity for me to work with the principals and then the principals in turn to work with their teachers as we talk about the school improvement process. And then last but not least, we have our data meeting. So you are all aware that Superintendent Kirby does our data semester meetings. We don't just have those meetings and then tuck the feedback away. I continue to work with the principals on that feedback to ensure that we continue to move in the right direction. And now, if you don't have any questions, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Swacker for graduation.
Where is tomorrow's principal's meeting?
At Delisle, and it's from eight to four-thirty. Please, the principals would be delighted to see you guys. I think Allison is presenting tomorrow. Amanda will have a part about the information that she just shared that they put together for the principals. We'll be talking about our walkthrough work, so it's a great way to see the school improvement process in action.
Good evening, everybody. Here to talk about my favorite thing, which is the graduation.
Are you getting sick of us yet, Bob?
Not at all. And it is exciting when we talk about graduation. I think it's exciting for our students to think about graduation, but it's also important for us to know that it's that culmination of twelve years' worth of experience. And it's really something that if we're doing well, we're hitting different benchmarks each year. Sometimes we think about graduation really coming in and like the junior and senior year, where all of a sudden it's the oh no moment. Like, we're ready, we've gotta do all these things. But I think our effective system is really backwards mapping that so students have those benchmarks each year. Much like we're talking about assessments, there are certain things that students can perform in order to show that they're being ready with graduation. So as we're thinking about this, the updated information for this evening does talk about our senior class, which is the class of 2025. Currently, we are tracking that there are four hundred and ten students in the senior cohort. So they tell you that one, so we try to understand our denominator. And two, for you to understand how many handshakes you're going to have to. That is a large class. It's a very good-sized class. So we're thinking about that right now, we're thinking that, well, actually, we are following that eighty-two percent or three hundred and thirty-eight of those seniors are on track to meet the graduation requirements for the May twenty-ninth graduation ceremony. Now, just because that number is where we are right now, we are still doing lots of things in order to try and get more students through. Specifically, we've got students enrolled in credit recovery, we've got kids doing the after-school program with our TASSL program. We're doing some project-based learning where students that might be able to, they might be missing a math and an English credit, they could be performing something, an activity that would get them both of those credits. And then we're also thinking about making sure that students have the other component. So it is just not credits, but it's also the competencies and the readiness. So students have to demonstrate three things in order to get that high school diploma. They have to have those twenty credits in the right courses. They have to be able to demonstrate their competency. They can do that through meeting the ELA and mathematics benchmark or state tests. Or they have some other ways in case they've taken that test twice and they have not met that proficient score. There are some ways that students can still earn that competency, including making sure they have career readiness, so they demonstrate two career-focused activities like scoring a three or higher on web exams, earning twelve-point industry credentials, completing a pre-apprenticeship, or show evidence of acceptance into an approved apprenticeship, or they have a state-issued license for practice and a vocation. Also, we know that work-based learning is really important for students to demonstrate their competencies, including having two hundred and fifty hours and the Ohio Means Job Writing Seal. We also know that students can participate in college credit plus programs in order to kind of circumvent some of those testing requirements. And students in the CCP program must earn credit in a non-medial math or English course in order for that subject area that they have not passed that assessment to count. We also know that some students may pursue a military enlistment, which that does count as another way for students to meet that competency piece. And then, of course, there's also the SAT and the ACT remediation free scores. And we do know that our students take the SAT as part of our assessment suite for the high school. So they will get that opportunity to earn that remediation free score. And then the third component is the readiness, which is the two seals. So right now, with those three hundred and thirty-eight seniors, that they've earned seventeen-plus, seventeen and a half-plus credits. And some of our students have far exceeded that, that are ready to graduate. I think the highest number of credits, I think I saw a student that had thirty-four credits at this point in time, which is great. Students are definitely earning those credits. And there's also that multiplier effect when students take college credit classes or they, that you take one college, one semester of a college credit plus class, it counts as a full year of credit in the high school world. So we see that students are definitely taking advantage of some of those programs. And we also see that twelve-point credential and the requirements for those seals. So I did want to just give a brief update as to where we are specifically. And I broke this down thinking about the credits, the competencies and the readiness because they really do need to have all three. But for us to take some action items, it's almost like we need to separate them. So it's not just great, we don't want to just have that big picture. We want to understand which students need specific programs in order to meet those three areas. So right now, we're at eighty-two percent of our seniors or around there. I mean, I hate to say that that's an exact number, but we, it's constantly moving when we're thinking about students that have come in, checking transcripts, making sure that students are on track, making sure that students are in the right courses. If a student finishes an after-school like TASSL program, they may have earned that credit, but it didn't show up on their transcript yet. So there's a lot of things that go into that calculation, but we're around eighty-two percent of our students are on track with those credits. So eighteen percent are off. When we think about the competency, we've got sixty-nine percent of our students have already done something or are in progress of doing something to meet that competency. Thirty-one percent of the students either are not enrolled in one of those opportunities to earn that or they haven't completed it yet. And then the readiness, we see that we've got sixty-nine percent of our students are on track with their readiness and thirty-one percent are not on track. I also included the numbers for the five-year cohort, just so we can keep track of that. We know how important that is for our district report card to keep an eye on the four and the five-year graduation rate. So that just helps you understand like where we are with some of the students that weren't able to complete their requirements last year. And they're still working with us. I always think it's one of the most inspiring things of working here in CHUH is, I think, compared to some of the district counterparts that I talked to, they don't usually have students return for a fifth year. That sometimes that's usually kind of indicates a dropout. But we do have students that will persevere, they'll continue to work on those requirements and they will go into our fifth-year graduation rate.
Do they walk?
So students that participate even in the fifth year can still participate in our graduation ceremonies, correct? Yep, yep. Yeah, I'm not sure, I can't recall if we've had a fifth-year graduate participate in a summer. I think usually that's the four-year. But if a student finishes, they're more than welcome to participate in any of those ceremonies. We do have other students, we actually work with an organization called the Graduation Alliance that helps people earn their GED. So even if they have stopped out of school and moved into this area, that we still work with them to make sure that they get their diploma. And state law says that if they live in our district and they meet those requirements, that we would issue the diploma once those credentials and all of those requirements are fulfilled. So we still do work with them. I don't think I've had anybody say that they want to participate in graduation, but we still do help make sure that students of any age that are looking for that high school diploma can earn that.
What kind of throughput is there in that program? How many people are we talking?
Handful. I mean, it's probably been, I don't know if we've exceeded ten in five years. I mean, it's usually one or two.
Just curious.
Yeah, there was a large group, I know we worked with a large group of students or previous students that came through under the legislation post-COVID, like right after COVID, that they kind of waived those testing requirements. So I know there was a large effort to reach out to any student that had not met those requirements so that way we can get them the graduation diploma when that's the legislation allowed for it. So when we think about our action steps, students off-track with credit or competency attainment are enrolled in credit recovery courses. We use the TASSL after-school program. And one of the main components of students meeting those twelve-point credentials is using the Rise Up course, which is the customer service and sales and the retail fundamentals course. And so we've got a lot of students that are trying to work through that as an opportunity to earn that competency score that they need, along with their Ohio Means Job Writing Seal. Also, students are working on completing their post-secondary plans. So we're using our surveys through Naviance in order to get a really good idea about where students are headed post-high school. And that way we can help provide some additional support. So I know that tomorrow, we'll be calling out students that have not been able to complete that survey for whatever reason. This will be our third go-around with them. We did some class presentations. I know that we had counselors go in as a follow-up and then tomorrow we'll be calling students down to either the mini auditorium or the room next to the mini auditorium just to try to get an idea about what their post-secondary plan is. So if they're saying it's two or four-year college and we noticed that they haven't applied or they haven't completed a FAFSA, that we would provide that additional support for them. And then, and I think that that's in line with our ultimate goal of making sure that we're gonna pilot something and hopefully in the next year or two, we're ready to make sure that all students are graduating and their diploma has their, or their portfolio has their diploma, but then it also has their plan. So that way students are walking across the stage with a written plan that helps them know what they said they wanted to do post-high school. And then students from twenty-seven and twenty-eight that are off-track with earning credit, so we're keeping track of some of the younger kids as well, that's really important for us to get them back on track quickly, are supported with credit recovery opportunities. At the high school, it's called CROP, so it's a credit recovery opportunity. And really, instead of issuing the failing grade, it's really to talk about giving students a little bit of extra time and support in order to have an F never show up on their transcript, but really to intervene and give them maybe a little bit more time just to complete any of those requirements. So that's really getting teachers and students to work together to provide any additional support for students. And then we're also encouraging them, as Mrs. Appotekne had talked about, that we are already gearing up for summer school. And students and families in the twenty-seven and twenty-eight cohorts that are not quite credit current, we will make sure that they get the brochure to register for summer school.
And we charge for summer school, for high school students, how much is it?
Yeah, there typically is a charge, I'm sure that we'll take a look at it. With the twenty-seven and twenty-eight cohorts, those are also gear-up cohorts. So we would probably want to use our gear-up funds in order to offset the cost for students in those cohorts. So I know that's kind of a little bit of a, you know, is it fair, is it not fair? It's like those funds are there to support the academic support for students and so we would want to make sure that that's part of the program. So maybe it's, maybe it's a fifty-fifty, but we'll work through some of those details once we get the idea of how much it would cost for summer school to take place.
Okay, I remember it being on the order of a hundred dollars, but that was a few years back.
Yeah, so now like six hundred dollars, is that where inflation?
I don't know.
I don't know what inflation is going for. But definitely we can look at it, I'm sure the academic services team will start really brainstorming about what the details of summer school will look like.
All right, so we do realize that was a lot of information. The teams have been working really hard and I just commend them on their efforts. But what we do want to do is, Ms. Coleman and I in our respective offices want to summarize next steps because I mean, you think that that is probably the most critical, just to remind all of us of, you know, what we're doing as we move forward. So. So, so as we move forward, our curriculum efforts will be, will focus on continuing professional learners for educators. We're ensuring that they have the necessary training for high-yield instructional strategies and high-quality materials. We'll also maintain ongoing classroom observations and feedback to support instructional improvement while reinforcing the implementation of high-quality instructional materials across the content areas. So something Ms. Apetekne was talking about, where not only are we spending time in professional learning, talking about the materials themselves and navigate them and illuminating the more rigorous activities we want to put students in the learning pit with, but we're also gonna go out and walk and be present in classrooms to observe instruction and give feedback. In terms of college career readiness, as Bob just mentioned, we're utilizing graduation and readiness data to track student participation in credit competency and readiness programs. Additionally, we will pilot post-secondary plan to plan completion initiative with the class of 2025 to help students map out their next steps after graduation. That's something Bob and I have talked quite a bit about as we're looking at that, you know, how we're tracking students post-graduation. Our data strategy will emphasize strengthening the connection between assessment results and instructional practices. That's really critical. Educators will receive feedback and guidance on analyzing assessment data and using it for action planning. So Ms. Apetekne talked about those tools, those two main tools that we use. So that's, we've really engaged most teachers with those tools, if not all teachers with those tools, at multiple points throughout the year, and we'll continue to revise that as we move forward. Additionally, as we're preparing for the, for next school year of 25, 26, testing calendar, we'll work to incorporate what we've observed from this year to improve the process. So I know we had some conversation over just test environment and, you know, really engaging in students, and that kind of goes right along with the clarity work, right? Like, what's the, you know, what's their part of the, of testing within the learning process? And finally, in student services, we'll continue to support and monitor the progress of students with disabilities to ensure that they have access to make progress within the general education curriculum in the least restrictive environment. So we mentioned co-teaching opportunities. We've mentioned, these are looking at planning, looking at schedules. I know Ms. Apetekne mentioned that, that's where we really want to focus on how we're ensuring that students with disabilities are in the least restrictive environment. And we also want to focus on aligning their IEPs with standards-based goals to better support success. And I'm gonna actually turn it over to Ms. Coleman to talk about her office.
Thank you. And for the overlap between our two departments, Lisa Hunt could not be here today, but around family engagement, we'll continue to measure our family engagement plan to support key data targets and district priorities, strengthen our communication with, collaboration with parent leadership groups, and partner with organizations to facilitate capacity-building workshops for our families at HFRC. I also want to include that Lisa Hunt, just recently, will be working more closely with me on parents who may have concerns in the district. So when you, sometimes you guys send me emails around parents that have problems. Lisa Hunt is a really great resource for working with those families. She was a parent in the district, so she is partnering with me. She will be a first contact for those families, and she's really big into how can we work together to resolve the issue? So I'm really excited to be working with her in that capacity. Around school improvement, we'll continue to support our principals by conducting our monthly principal meetings, which are data-focused. They include professional learning sessions and opportunities for support. We will continue to have routine and consistent one-on-one coaching walkthroughs with the principal, focusing on actionable feedback and support. And I put support in there intentionally, because these are not gotchas, they are truly opportunities to enhance our practices. And then our partner walks amongst principals to collaborate, to encourage collaboration and shared learning experiences in our continued data meetings, and we'll have those more frequently to make sure that we are monitoring exactly what we want the principals to provide their teachers with. And then last but not least, socio-emotional learning and academic supports. Dr. Abdussattar and Jan Bennett have done a wonderful job of our MTSS programs, and we look forward to presenting that information to you at a later date. But we will continue to monitor the implementation of MTSS at all levels and provide support to our school teams, grade-level teams, and administrators throughout the process, support the implementation of the district-wide SEL curriculum, Character Strong, and continue to evaluate the effectiveness of MTSS structures and make adjustments as necessary. And we thank you so much for listening to us this evening, and now we will answer any questions that you may have for the group.
I have one question. When we share, like, the assessment results with educators, what is the feedback that we usually receive or hear?
I guess we could probably all answer at different levels. So when I work with principals, we particularly look at the school improvement piece on how somebody may have done with their students in a class, and then what we can do as district leaders to support the achievement in that classroom. So we look at best strategies, if the teacher has enough support with learning, the curriculum adoption, and so forth. And I think Mike could probably answer on a deeper level, because his through-line is directly through the teachers, and my through-line is to the principals.
Thank you, yes. So back to the, the planning tool, the data and assessment analysis tool, that actually worked in partnership with data and assessment curriculum instruction. So that particular tool is really intended for teachers to really unpack what the assessment, and this could be used for multiple assessments. It was designed to be, I wouldn't say the word universal, but it was, it is meant to have a broader stroke on the assessments that we use, to specifically ask questions about breaking those, those questions down, and what standards, of course, they were aligned to, but then getting further into what those next steps are instructionally, and planning for that through the high-quality instructional materials. So this is a tool that we feel that gets down to that level, where teachers really then walk away with a plan for next steps. Of course, like anything, you know, we'll continue to look to revise it for another iteration that might, you know, better serve, you know, the needs of the teachers in terms of, you know, planning for assessment. So I don't know if that answered your question?
Kind of.
Yeah.
I, I just wonder, I mean, again, looking at the benchmarks, I know you said they're not for the full year, but how can we, I mean, you also mentioned buy-in for the students, but I just wonder if there's also, like, enough buy-in that, you know, that we need for, for, for our educators, you know, to, as Ms. Verd mentioned, because they are the adults who are facilitating these assessments. And so I don't think it's just like a reflection on the students, you know, wholeheartedly.
So just to follow up on that, I think you bring up a really good point. One of the things that we did in the analysis, and we worked, not only, it wasn't even just with teachers and teacher teams, but also even principals and their teams, that they went through that, the analysis, and identified the things that were taught versus the things that were not taught, to illuminate a real perspective on what those results mean.
Right.
And I think, of course, with, you know, without saying, there was more emphasis put on, hey, we, we taught that already, maybe there's something we can go back and revisit. So CNI has taken a strategic effort to identify those things that were tested in the, that we saw in the benchmark, that we're already in pacing, right? And to then help support, you know, teachers for planning to sort of go back to those topics and those standards. But I think what you're saying is, is something that we're sensitive to. We're sensitive to the fact that we, we want to continue to foster teacher efficacy and student efficacy, too. That's a really critical piece. We want to make sure that they, you know, understand impact in a way that's broken down into, you know, what we're asking students to do, that, you know, it's reflective of what they've taught. And students, of course, it's reflective of what they've learned, so that's really important. So as we move into next school year, we're gonna work closely, of course, with Allison's department and curriculum instruction, and Amanda's department, and really the whole breadth of the team, and also, you know, Rachel's area, you know, Rachel's office, too, we'll work with her, but to talk about, like, what can that testing calendar look like, so that we're making sure that we're giving data in real time for instruction, and that we have rigorous examples of what students need to be able to do, and that we can respond to it, instructionally, in real time. And that's really important, you know, those cycles of assessment, right? So we want to get there, but we also, of course, have a responsibility to make greater impact and show growth and trends at a district level over time. So it is necessary for us to, you know, have those, like, bigger tests, like winter map, like fall to winter map, right? But we understand that, we're sensitive to testing, testing fatigue, we hear our teachers, and we want to maintain efficacy. So we're trying to find that, that balance between what we need to do, yeah.
Yeah, I would just say, we had the principal data meetings, we looked at all the MAP data and the benchmark data, and, you know, how teachers are responding to the data, you know? And in many instances, there were recognition that hadn't got to this yet, did well here. But I saw some very extensive plans and planning coming from that, that I think will be very helpful for our teachers and our students, where, you know, teachers were, like, taking a unit and re, you know, redoing it based on, you know, content that they were surprised students hadn't learned, and wanted to make sure that they came back to it. So, and that's really, it's, it's a learning tool. That's the point of it.
Any other questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
A lot of, a lot of information.
A lot to digest. It's gonna take a little while.
Well, thank you to the team for your hard work. This first, well, we're past first semester at this point. This is just a fraction of the work people do, if you can believe that. And I'm glad we were able to do some focus in terms of how we're responding to our data, which is really important, appreciative of members of the rest of the academic services team being here, in addition to Dr. Lombardo and Mr. Patton. This could have been an even longer presentation, actually. But we did want to, to kind of stay consistent in how, how we focus that work, and we will be trying to figure out when we're gonna do our gifted group calls. That has been waiting for a very long time to be presented to the board, so we will get there. So, thank you all, have a wonderful evening.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
May I have a motion to adjourn?
I motion to adjourn.
A second.
Mr. Gaynor.
Mr. Heinz. Yes. Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Trimble?
Yes.
Ms. Kretschow?
Yes.
Thank you very much, and good night.